Yeah. Yeah, that's what happened.
Good evening. Calling Richmond City School Board Meeting, Monday, October fifteenth to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The board members who are present, Ms. Barnes, Ms. Dore, Ms. Barlow.
Ms. Barlow is here.
Uh, Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Mrs. Burke?
There.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Dr. Sefini?
Here.
Mr. Page?
Here.
Do you have the call of Madam Chair?
And Madam Clerk?
Yes.
For the record, can you please note that Ms. Cosby is absent due to work obligations?
The next item on the agenda is item one point zero two, the allegiance following that number silence. Dr. Sefini, please, give us an equation of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Lord. Thank you.
The next item is one point zero three, adoption of the agenda. I do not have any change, Madam Chair.
Said that we have no items to the agenda, the agenda will be adopted as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Gibson?
One, one suggestion is if, if possible, if we could move the consent items up just to allow any teachers that are here the ability to come home, you know, if they want to. Um, that is item, I think it's seven. The two consent items, seven point oh one and seven point oh two, I believe. If we can move that.
What is the vote of the board?
Sounds like reasonable request to me, Madam Chair.
So we would move item seven point oh one.
Madam Chair, she's asking for the consent agenda to be moved to items eight point oh one and eight point oh two. Okay, thank you. I can move those up to right after the minutes if you would like.
Could you just speak louder, KPM?
I can move those items to right after the call of the minutes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, it may, it may be more beneficial to hold it until directly after public comment?
Just rearranging, your motion, you suggested that we move it to the consent agenda?
Uh, my motion was to move the consent agenda, which, um, I corrected is items eight point oh one and eight point oh two. And I concur with Mr. Barlow to do that after public information.
What is the vote of the board? So the consent agenda will be moved right after public information.
The next item is one point zero four, to approve the minutes of the October first, two thousand eighteen school board meeting, please see your motion to approve those, Madam Chair.
Should I move?
In a second.
Thank you.
It's removed by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Dr. Sefini to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Senator Wijamna, the minutes have been approved as presented. Next item?
Next item is item two, two points, uh, recognition, two point oh one, recognition of Richmond's Sister City, Sister City, Latama City, Japan.
We have a representative?
Hello. Hello. So I'm Elizabeth Wayne.
I'm Heather Merriman, and we are both teachers here in Richmond.
And?
Uh, I'm from Armstrong, and Heather is from William Block Elementary.
So we had the privilege of going to Japan for a teacher exchange this past summer, and it was phenomenal. I stayed for seventeen days.
I stayed for, I believe, twenty-one days.
And here are some pictures of my host families. So I stayed with two different families. Um, the teacher that's sitting on the floor with me in the left picture is actually coming for Christmas this year. And my family on the right, um, they're not coming yet, but hopefully soon.
Uh, I got to stay with two host families as well, the Izimas, uh, Izima Sensei, uh, the gentleman on the end was, was the vice principal of one of the elementary schools I've visited. And Keiko Tanigawa was, um, works with the assistant language teachers for the Saikoma City Schools.
So while we were there, um, we got to visit many schools. So I was primarily in elementary schools, seeing the culture and the day-to-day life of the school. It's very different than our typical school day, and you'll see it as we go through the pictures. Um, so the school buildings were very large, as you saw, um, but very beautiful.
Yeah, I visited seven schools total, including, uh, because I'm a special education teacher, I visited a special education school for students with what we would consider severe disabilities as well.
So while I was there, I did, I helped with the English class, so got to read a lot of books, um, sing songs, taught about, I mainly worked with fifth grade, um, and sixth grade, because sixth grade is an elementary school there. So I got to teach about where we live in America, and I showed them videos of my classroom, and just showed them like the main differences between what I'm seeing there and what we experience. Oh, yeah, and here, they only learned the standard method of multiplication, and my kids learned like five different methods, so I taught them a couple different methods of multiplication, and they were blown away by that.
Yeah, I, I did some time at elementary schools, and I also visited junior highs, uh, which is seventh through ninth grade in Japan. And they were really excited to have some native English speakers to practice their conversational English at that age. So I actually interviewed the lunch committee at one of the, uh, middle schools, and unfortunately, those pictures didn't make it in, but a couple, a month later, I just got pictures that they actually made an American-style lunch, complete with cupcakes for dessert, based on that interview. Uh, that was me trying to teach them about, uh, Fourth of July, because I was there for Fourth of July.
So lunch was very different. They bring the food to the classroom, and the students serve the students. So they all have the same exact meal, they all have to finish their entire meal, um, and, yeah, so here we are eating in the classroom. They bring placemats, their own chopsticks, um, and they keep a mask over their face until it's time to eat. And they wear, those are those student servers and those were taped, and, um,
it's very nice. Oh, they eat in the classroom because in Japan, students stay in one homeroom for most of the day, and the teachers are traveling between the classes, unlike how we do it in America in middle and high schools.
So in Japan, in the schools, they don't have, um, janitors, so the kids actually clean the floor every day during a cleaning, um, well, not just the floor, they clean everything during the cleaning time. So you just saw in that video, they have rags and they're pushing them across the floor. So, um, it was an experience to walk down the hallways during cleaning time.
Yeah, there are a lot of opportunities for student ownership at schools in Japan. Every student, at least at the, several of the elementary schools are required to serve on committees, so that's the animal care committee. They had two outdoor rabbits, and they were cleaning up the enclosures.
And then here are just some pictures of our other experiences outside of the school. And overall, it was just amazing to see the difference between our schools in America and Japan. They go to school for a longer school day, um, and school year, and they have homework all night when they get home. So, you know, there are pros and cons. I like a lot of what I have. I have a lot of freedom in the way I teach and like the methods I use. Um, whereas it is definitely more structured there. It's very much you are on this page on this day, and you're using the textbook. And so I enjoy the freedom of like coming up with engaging lessons and.
The English curriculum in particular that I got a chance to look at is heavily, heavily scripted down to like, this is the conversation you are going to have with the students at the beginning of every day. Uh, so, you know, that was kind of interesting, and but I, so like, uh, Heather, I appreciate the freedom and, uh, ownership. Teachers are given over their own lessons, but I also really appreciate the ownership the students were given over their own school. And so just today, uh, I suggested at a, uh, school culture meeting that we look into maybe in the next year, establishing committees for our students to serve on at Armstrong. Uh, and so thank you very much. This wouldn't have been possible without, without my school board, because, yep, it came out of the, uh,
Y'all bugged us. Thank you.
Um, and just as a thank you gift, I brought some gifts, and I believe Ms. Nixon, who was our sister cities representative, um, also brought some. So this is for the superintendent and really the entire school board. This is a Daruma, which is, is a doll, and you notice he has no eyes. And that is because you draw one eye on when you set a goal, and then when you finish the goal, you get to draw the other eye on. So I know our big goal, RPS, is to get all of our schools fully accredited and, uh, you know, finish our memorandum of understanding. So maybe you all can draw the eye on together for that. And on a more fun note, I did bring some Bainteen flavored snacks. And this is a calendar from, uh, Sakarasa Special Education School that features some of their students.
And I would just like to say to everyone, if you haven't heard of the exchange program between Richmond Public Schools and, you know, Sister City in Japan. This is the seventh year that Richmond Public Schools has participated in this program, and it has been amazing on both sides of the world. And we are getting ready right now. Uh, Sister Cities International has announced their theme for young artists and young art competition. And that will be for two thousand nineteen, Global Citizens, Resilient Communities. And if students from the ages between thirteen and eighteen are interested in doing an essay, poetry, photography, short film, or even artwork to participate in this, we will have a local competition first, and then the winners of the local competition will go on to Sister Cities International. Next June, the two thousand eighteen winners, uh, artwork and writing will come to Richmond, Virginia to be on display. And it's been a while since it's been here. Uh, the last time it was here was in two thousand and five. So we're very excited about that. Thank you very much for all of your support with this wonderful program. I too have some gifts from not only Saikoma City, but baseball. Because baseball is our longest exchange program with Sister Cities for the city of Richmond and Japan. So they have sent T-shirts, which on the inside are the names of all the players. They have sent a number of information booklets concerning Saikoma City, and if you do not know, they have a world-class bonsai museum, a wonderful trainee museum. And my particular favorite, they have a dog museum, and they make dogs. And Iwasaki, and it takes ten years just to learn to make a hand. Thank you very much. We appreciate all of your support from Richmond Public Schools. Y'all are wonderful.
Thank you again, and thank you for all that you do. Um, this has been a longstanding partnership with the Sisters City, Sister City partnership, and we look forward to continue. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Sorry, we have, we have to digress now. My son, who was a teacher at a public school, was pretty much participating in that program, and that was absolutely awesome. Only thing is, we didn't have the support financially. No. What really pleased me there was that Mr. Burke had been a student of the Japanese language teacher, Mr. Ono-Sen. And when he was selected for the program, he really wasn't sure that he would ever be able to use his Japanese language, and never used it since high school. Went to Japan and found out, and he backed on it immediately. I was so envious, because I go around and everyone takes me down there, pretty animated, off, and I do. I know how to find a cabana. I can find the police, but.
That was the power of Richmond Public Schools, a graduate of Richmond Public Schools. So thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item?
Next item is item three, public information. I do not have any speakers to sign up in advance. Would it be a pleasure, Madam Chair?
If we have individuals in the audience, if you will come forward at this time, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you have five minutes. Please come forward at this time now.
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, before they do sign up to speak, our interpreter is here this evening. She needs to make her announcement.
Okay.
Good evening. There will be a Spanish interpreter for tonight available. Buenas noches. Va a haber un intérprete al español disponible. Por favor deagordarme. Gracias.
Gracias. When you come forward, sign in and state your name.
Good evening. Everyone, my name is Reverend Rosalyn Hall. I am affiliated with the Baptist Ministers Conference of Richmond and Vicinity. I'm here on behalf of the faith community in general, and, um, in particular, the Baptist Ministers Conference of Richmond and Vicinity. I just wanted to let you know that we have unanimously decided that we will publicly, um, I first of all want to apologize because, um, when the accreditation situation hit the fan, we had to accept the fact that as a faith community, we needed to step up more than we have. And we want you to know that we are very much in support, um, of the work that your school board is doing. And we would also like to let you know that we want to avail ourselves to partner with you in whatever way that we can. We have our Reverend Paige Shiguris has reached out to several of your, um, board members, and we will be reaching out further to you, sir, and to each and every one of you. And we will be, um, paying, uh, closer attention to the, these things that are going on within our school system. And specifically, those of us that are Richmond residents, such as myself, and we will make certain that we, um, show our base and show our support. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am A. Ramon Moore, president of the Richmond Education Association. And if you see me looking down, when you get forty-plus, you know, you have to get some new contacts, and I refuse to wear reading glasses, though you will see me reading this way. Good evening, Chairwoman Page, Superintendent Cambrus, and members of the school board. I am A. Ramon Moore, speaking on behalf of the Richmond Education Association. The Richmond Education Association has been working in good faith with Superintendent Cambrus and members of the school board. And after last month's meeting with the mayor's office, we are convinced that the association administration can achieve great work. In light of tonight's consent agenda, I would encourage the entire school board to join us by wearing red to support the association red for Ed every Wednesday, as I am modeling tonight. We would also like the board members to share their support weekly on social media when it comes to this movement, as we all will be in this together. We are extremely excited that the school board has taken it upon themselves to address the RPS free speech resolution tonight, which outlines a district's commitment to RPS teachers and staff free speech. However, we believe it is imperative that the resolution will be passed, be followed up with a recommendation by the superintendent to create, uh, HR policy. RPS staff and teachers across the district would like for this to be passed. It's time for the school board to strongly commit to protecting us from such dangerous behaviors, um, by showing that the resolution is passed tonight. In return, we, the Richmond Education Association, confirm our commitment to you and other staff through the city. Again, we look forward to you all supporting us, and I look forward to, uh, Mr. Cambrus taking some pictures, um, on Wednesday of himself in that nice red tie that he have. And also board members, could you please send in red so that we can, um, filter it throughout, um, our, um, fan page, VEA, and et cetera, et cetera. And Ms. Um Burke, I know you have a lot of red.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Deanna Fierro, and I'm the founder of Unitive Educators, which is a recently adopted branch of Unitive Justice that is founded by Sylvia Plout. I'm actually here speaking, um, in part, in, on behalf of some of my friends who are educators and some parents that I know, and myself too, who is a parent of a Richmond Public School student. Um, but I came to speak about the accreditation ratings document that will be, um, shared later on. Last year and the year before that, I was the department chair at Albert Hill Middle School. Um, it is our best performing middle school. Um, but to get it where it is now was not easy. Um, I started there four years ago. Um, we were not meeting the accreditation rating. Um, the year before I became department chair, we were at fifty-nine percent. The following year, uh, after helping the principal implement a data tracking process that was, um, originally created by Cindy Gunter, who works in curriculum instruction, um, here. She shared it with me when we worked together at MLK. I took it, I ran with it, I helped, uh, change it and adopt it to our needs at Albert Hill, so that it would address more, um, direct issues, like our gap groups, um, our students who, um, were not being recognized and were not being assisted like they needed to. Um, so the first year, we had plenty of time to reach our students and to, um, get them more than one time in a day, uh, to work with them and tutor them and give them, you know, supports and, um, some, share some of those skills, reteach some of those skills that they were lacking from, uh, lower level grades, especially basic computation. That year, we went, uh, we increased eleven percent, and we made seventy percent, which made us accredited in math. The next year, which was last year, um, our principal and in the division, they decided to change the schedule so that we would have clubs. And I said, if you do clubs on Mondays and Fridays, you're going to take time away from our department. There was not an opportunity to express how in detail all of that practice, and I was told, this is what we're doing, deal with it. I said, okay. After looking at the data, uh, which I pride myself on doing is data, to me, going through data, you find stories. It's the equivalent, the feeling I get is the equivalent that a gardener gets when they garden. I told my principal, we are looking at getting sixty-eight percent. If we do not do something, we're not going to pass. They were more concerned about the new growth measure, and I said, I get it. The growth measure makes it look good, makes the numbers look good. But what are we really teaching our, our students, the skills that they need? Are we really servicing them, um, with integrity and honesty? We got sixty-nine percent. And because of growth, we got seventy-six. It looks great, but it doesn't mean that our kids are where they need to be. That's going to catch up to them when they get into high school and they start taking algebra. My other concern is that we're, we're already into the school year, and there are complaints about, that I'm getting shared with from teachers that I used to work with, about, we don't have computers. How are we going to do the crossover, um, with the Desmond calculators? The last time that VDOE changed their curriculum, they also changed the process of doing the test. That was in two thousand nine. The scores went from eighty-two down to forty-two percent. That's serious. They're expecting the same drop this time. If we don't do something to start getting computers in place for teachers to properly train our students, um, we're going to, we're going to see drops. If we don't start working on IEPs so that students that need the accommodation, um, to use the hand help, the scores are going to drop again. I don't want my teacher friends to get blamed for something that is not their fault. I was told several times that every time I brought up an issue in front of the division specialists, every time I brought up an issue in front of the VDOE, uh, member who was there to help my principal, um, that I was undermining authority. I finally decided to leave Richmond Public Schools when I said, that's enough. I'm tired of working for people that don't know how to do their job and don't allow me to speak out. I'm back in school. I'm going to be a principal when I finish my master's in educational leadership, and hopefully, I would like to come back and resell the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. I stand here to heartily applaud this superintendent and this school board for the developing policies and culture of candor, sharing concerns, telling the truth. The support for free speech by staff, especially teachers. Teachers are afraid. It's a culture of not speaking out, not speaking up. Not sure of its roots. I've always felt that we have little to fear, but fear itself. But that said, there is the fear. But I think it's, uh, it's going to dissipate as more and more demonstrations are made of the desire for contact, the desire for the sharing of concerns. It goes beyond staff and the community. Some years ago, I had an interview with a prior superintendent, this was several superintendents ago, who confided in me that, you know, you just can't, can't really share the facts. you know, you just can't, can't really share the facts. Because there are too many people out there in the media, in the community, who are out to get RPS. And we just can't, can't be candid. And this superintendent actually said to me, and I can't even be candid with the school board. The school board is not necessarily my friend as a superintendent. So I, I think it's a new day, I think things are changing. Very much in the right direction, and just thank you all ever so much. Keep it up.
Thank you. That concludes our public information period. Next item.
The next item is item four, Board Business. I'm sorry, thank you. Is the consent agenda which was moved up. Items now three point zero two and three point zero three are to receive for action a proclamation supporting red for ed and receive for action a resolution supporting free speech. Those, that proclamation and resolution will post it to board docs for your review. Need a motion to approve these items, Madam Chair?
You need a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Mr. Ballow and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Young?
Just real briefly, Madam Chair, my only critique of the resolution relevant to free speech is that it doesn't go far enough. We just heard from my neighbor, Deanna, speak to the real challenge in RPS, and it is an institutional challenge relevant to folks candidly, frequently downtown, trying to, trying to keep teachers in their lane. And it's something that really troubles me. But like our friend Tom just spoke to, it is a new day because we have a new superintendent, we have a new team downtown that have turned, turned things on its head. And I'm very excited there too. I'm very excited, at the risk of beating a dead horse, that, that we are, for the first time in a long time, at least as long as I can remember, and I've resided my entire life in the city, that we are finally being candid about our deficiencies or challenges and, and what it will take to, to make serious amends. So, I share all that to say that I think all over two thousand, some teachers should, should know that this school board and this superintendent are aligned with them and that, well, I'll say it this way. Teachers should know that as far as this school board member is concerned, I want them to run their classrooms in a way that, well, in a way that's like their own business, absent interference from, from anywhere else, because the folks on the frontline know best. So, I'm very pleased that we're voting in support. Anticipate will be voting in support, I will be this resolution. But my only critique is that it doesn't go far enough. And I look forward to a spirited conversation perhaps for the balance of 2018 in collaboration with what our new superintendent is, is already starting. Thank you.
Ms. Ballow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to speak in favor of both of these resolutions. It's, there's, there's no question that here in Virginia and many places in the country, and certainly in Richmond, that we need to do a better job supporting our schools financially and supporting our educators financially. And I'm really glad that we are very likely going to pass a resolution affirming our stance that we, we believe that our school district and our teachers deserve better funding and better pay. And I also wanted to speak to the, the free speech resolution. I think free speech is a critical, fundamental right guaranteed by, by a couple of constitutions here, as well as our board policy. And I want to encourage teachers to speak out whenever they can. I've found that the teacher, that teacher input is invaluable. They are, they are the people who are closest to what's going on in the classroom. They're seeing what's happening in the schools. And I can't imagine how much less effective I would be as a board member if I wasn't getting positive, or just getting feedback from teachers. So, I, I really appreciate the teachers who have had the courage and have felt comfortable speaking out and reaching out to board members. And my hope is that this proclamation, or this resolution will inspire more to reach out to us and give us, give us candid feedback as well.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Thor?
I'm thrilled we were able to pull this together with such urgency. And, you know, I mean, the, the negative financial impact on public education after the recession was historic. And, but I believe that our collective action in addressing that will be historic as well. And I just, I know that in order to, to make history, we need the teachers, and we need to empower their voices. You know, I'm going to get nostalgic, but it was a group of teachers who taught me what advocacy looks like in the city. And as a parent, I'm just so thankful for what their collective action was able to accomplish here in Richmond. And I have no doubt that what we can accomplish collectively as a group. And so, so whatever that we can do to make sure that this resolution is not something that just isn't heard by the people in this room, but, but is well appreciated throughout the district. So, let's, you know, put it on social media, and let's send an email blast, and let's make sure every teacher knows that we embrace this action and this resolution and this proclamation. And I reiterate, you know, what Mr. Young said, let's do more. Because the culture that, that folks have been talking about has been here for some time. And so, we're going to have to really overcompensate to make sure that teachers and staff members know that we need their voices. We can't fix these schools if we don't know what's broken.
Ms. Thor?
Just to echo sentiments of my colleagues, teachers are very important. And we have to support them, we have to keep the best of the best. And, and we know funding is a huge issue. But in the same token, we have to keep student achievement in the forefront for each and every one of us. Student achievement should be our main focus. I support this issue.
Call it a question?
The motion was made by Mr. Ballow and seconded by Mrs. Burke to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Wilson? May I ask, Ms. Wilson, Superintendent? What will be called a question?
Apparently, I'm too slow. I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers who are here this evening and those who are watching, and those who have participated in the public discussion about how to make Richmond Public Schools the best it can possibly be. As a former teacher myself, I can say very clearly that teachers' voices not only matter, but are essential to us being the preeminent school system in Virginia and to us achieving our goals. So I'm delighted to support both of these resolutions. And as Mr. Moore knows, I have been doing everything I possibly can to support Red for Ed. On Wednesdays, I even have a red iPhone case.
Okay, can we call it a question?
Okay. Again, the motion was made by Mr. Ballow and seconded by Mrs. Burke and Ms. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Ballow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Ballow?
Yes.
Dr. Sepini?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion pays is eight zero. The next item is item four, Board Business, to discuss, four point oh one, to discuss the two thousand nineteen legislative package.
So, board members, as previously stated, conversation. With the council president, Mr. Heber. And, so we can do our one or two things. We can have, because the clerk sent an email to council's clerk, so we can have further meeting dates to further discuss the legislative package, or we can wait until the compact meeting on the twenty-ninth of this month, which is, which does not give us much time, but it's the will of the board. Either wait until the twenty-ninth to come up with some tentative dates for our legislative, how we want to move forward. Dr. Sepini?
My call is to get dates put down as quickly as possible and use the compact meeting as the worst-case scenario.
So I will have the clerk to reach out. I will also give Mr. Heber a call, so then we can come up with some tentative dates. So then we can move forward, because this is a critical item. And we need to be at the table when it talks about education. Next item?
The next item is item five, Administration Business, five point zero one, receive an update on the Virginia Department of Education memorandum for understanding.
So board members, it's on, white paper, white paper is on board docs. And also, we had a conversation, but this is the public document that outlines the meeting with Dr. Lane and Mr. Van Gager and Superintendent. That was scheduled for October second. As I stated before, it's, it's on board docs. And we will have two meetings a year that is, is laid out, outlined in the MOU. And any board members that are interested, they may attend this. I'd like to invite them. And also, they're commending us for reinstating our internal, internal auditor position. So once we, we will see dates for our first meeting, we will discuss strategic plan in more details and also talk about the changes to the standards of learning and what should we be looking for as a board and look at data and what types of questions we should be asking in outcome that we should see.
Just wanted to add that I and my senior team met with the Office of School Improvement to do a review of the memorandum of understanding to make sure that both the state and the division were on the same page about the requirements of the division. So we went through the entire MOU again to, to level set going into the school year. And as Ms. Page said at our meeting with the state superintendent and the president of the state board, I would characterize it as very positive and forward-looking in a sense of collaboration and partnership going forward to help us achieve the goal of hundred percent accreditation and the end of the MOU. So, looking forward to that partnership and to our continued work with the Office of School Improvement.
Next item?
The next item is five point zero two, receive a presentation on accreditation and graduation rates.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Cameris, board members. I want to be able to control the deck, how can I? Is there a? Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks. There we go. Okay. So I want to talk to you tonight, related on what you were just speaking of. As you know, our accreditation model has been updated by the state. And this presentation reflects the achievement from the seventeen eighteen school year and the current accreditation ratings. Overall, the state's ratings, the big pivot is, in addition to student achievement, the state also now assesses schools on achievement gaps and student engagement. Prior to this accreditation model, the accreditation rating was based solely on student achievement rates. This model allows schools to, really expands the ability of schools to demonstrate student growth in addition to student proficiency on the state assessments. So, schools get credit for students who may not have passed but have made growth within a certain range or band. So that's one of the, I think, really positive aspects of this accreditation system. In the, in these three areas, we have, there are specific indicators. So for middle school and elementary school, all, we look at overall proficiency and growth in reading and writing. We look at overall proficiency and growth in math and overall proficiency in science. There's not really growth in science because there tends to be one assessment per level, so it's hard to look at growth in the science area. Additionally, in elementary and middle school, we look at English achievement gaps among subgroups and mathematic achievement gaps among subgroups. And then, we also look at student absenteeism. All of those things are the same for high school, except high school has an additional two measures in the student engagement category, which is graduation and completion index, the dropout rate, and eventually something called college career and civic readiness. And how that will be measured is to be determined and launched in two thousand and twenty-two. Each of these indicator areas receive, schools receive one of three levels of achievement, a level one, a level two, and a level three. And in each of these categories, achievement, achievement gaps, and student engagement, there are different criteria that lead to a level one, level two, or level three. So for example, when we are looking at the overall achievement of students, to earn a level one, essentially a green, you have to meet at least a seventy-five percent or a ten percent decrease in your failure rate from the previous year. So, let me give you an example. If you had forty percent of your students pass and sixty percent fail, your failure, ten percent of your failure rate would be six points. So if in the following year, you increase by six points or reduce your failure rate by six points, you would get credit for that growth and you can move over a level. And again, it's a little bit of a matrix here, but that's the general idea. And I will not go into so much detail to make your head spin tonight, but I'm happy to geek out with you later on, one-on-one. But I think the headline here is, this, for students, previously, it was a pretty blunt instrument. You either passed or failed. And you could get advanced, which includes, you know, pass, or you could be below basic. But in, in a nutshell, students were either proficient or not. And what this allows schools to do is to also really focus on growth, even if students are so far behind that they're not yet caught up to make proficiency or advanced levels. So in a sense, in essence, we call this the combined rate. So when you see the achievement rate, it means a combined rate that includes all the students who are proficient or advanced, and it also includes students who made growth. For example, so we use this for both English and math, the combined rate. And if you look at the graphic on the right, if you take ten students and six of them achieved proficiency or advanced, they passed, and four did not. But one of those students made significant growth, such that it counts for growth. And one of those students was an English learner who made progress on... And one of those students was an English learner who made progress on the screener we use for English language proficiency. So that's eight total students, so your combined rate would be eighty percent. Now, it's important to note here is sometimes students can be excluded from this count. So an English learner who has been in the, in school for a certain amount of time doesn't, um, doesn't have to count unless they've made growth. So it only works, you know, the school gets credit for that, but a, an English learner who hasn't made progress doesn't get counted in this count. So this is the combined rate. So to some, our achievement rate includes students who are proficient or advanced, students who did not score proficient or advanced but demonstrated growth from the prior year where possible, and students who did not score proficient or advanced and also didn't demonstrate growth, but they're language learners and did demonstrate progress on the access for L's assessment. It's really clear, right? Okay. The second bucket are achievement gaps. And what's important to note about achievement gaps is we tend to think about achievement gaps in comparing demographics against demographics. So what's the difference in achievement between white students or affluent students or other students? And the state looks at this in terms of, um, groups of students and their performance levels. So achievement gaps are determined by how many student groups are at certain achievement levels. So it's less of a comparison and really just on the surface, how many of your subgroups are achieving at the rate we just talked about. And then the third area around student engagement, again, level one, two, or three, and these are different benchmarks to meet. And again, high schools only look, high schools are the only people obviously accountable for graduation, completion, and dropout rate. And then all of our schools are responsible for chronic absenteeism, and you can see those benchmarks are there. So all of these things is what determines whether a school is a red, yellow, or green, or a level one, two, or three. So how that translates into a summary rating is essentially every, if every indicator is a green or a yellow, you are accredited. So you could have all yellows, or all greens, or a mix of greens and yellows, and you are accredited. You are accredited with conditions if you have one or more level three indicators, so one red or more. So you could have, you could have five greens and one red, you are accredited with conditions. And then accreditation denied is, is really something special that needs to happen. Um, or the school has for so long failed to implement a corrective action plan or to make any significant progress. So right now, I think almost every school in the state is either accredited or accredited with conditions. Carver would be an example of a school that would be a case where you would have accreditation denied. So let's look at a couple of quick examples. So as I shared, academic achievement, this is, you know, make-believe elementary school. And so you can see in achievement, we have a level one, a level three, a level one. And gaps, a level one and a level one, which means all of their gap, all their self-haus were, um, achieving at the right levels, and a level one here. But because there is one red, they are accredited with conditions. Another example is you'll see one with a mix of yellow and greens, and these are accredited. So this school will be accredited. And so there's not a weighting difference among the categories. So the, the sort of, I would say the weighting or what the state prioritizes is indicated in what constitutes a level one, two, or three in each bucket. And then here's an example of a high school accreditation rating. And you can see a mix of level ones, twos, and threes, and this is also accredited with conditions. I was going to give you guys an activity to test you on this, to see how, how quick your uptake was, but I decided we would save the time for questions. And so in your deck, and hopefully you got a chance to review this, um, this is, we've done a pretty extensive data analysis. But this is, this is a high-level view across, for every school, across each indicator, what their level was. And so what this is helpful for is a school or anyone to really understand where are the areas of where improvement is needed for my particular school. So, um, you can get a sense of, if we look at, um, our Chimerazo here, we can see that they're accredited with conditions. There are some good things happening. We still have some level one areas, but then we have some areas of focus. And so this allows the principal to sort of really drill in and understand what's really holding our school back from being fully accredited. As you all know from, I think, earlier, kind of earlier news story, Lynnwood Holton has an asterisk behind, beside it because if a school has been accredited for three prior years in a row, they, they then get three additional years of accreditation regardless of individual year status. And this was the last year that Holton was under that three-year rule, is what they call it. Um, so, um, so that's why Holton, despite having a level three in math achievement gap, it is accredited. That's the only scenario like that here. So I won't go through these in detail. You have these in front of you. But you can, again, if you're wondering, well, why is this school accredited versus this school accredited with conditions? The first thing you could do is look here and then find the area you want to learn more about and then dig into that specific data point. So I think, um, performance is mixed across our elementary schools. Our middle schools, while there are some bright spots, definitely have a ways to go in terms of overall achievement and overall accreditation. Um, so I think for schools that experience multiple indicators in level one, level three, achievement accreditation in one year, though not impossible, um, you know, these schools have a lot of work to do on top of an already difficult job. Again, possible, but that these schools have a particularly large lift ahead of them. And you can see the, these are our high schools and the range here. Amelia Street is under a, a special accreditation, alternative accreditation model, given the student, um, student population, the programmatic model. So that, that is being, that is under review right now at the state as to whether, that's where we set our benchmarks and we report out on whether those were met. Oh, oh, let me point to the appendix real quick. Um, so I do think, you, we look, we can look at the level ones, twos, and threes, and you can get a little blurry if you try to figure it out. You can get really lost in a lot of, um, conditions or different ways to earn a level one, two, or three. I will say, as we're looking at this, it's important to look at what that, those achievement rates are based on the model I just outlined for you. It's also important to look at raw score, um, raw passing rates. So, um, as a distinction from a combined rate. Because what this tells us is what percentage of students, when you clear all the different frames here, what percentage of students were proficient or advanced on the assessment? And so you can see, like, for, for example, with elementary schools, schools that were at eighty-seven percent all the way down to sixty-one percent proficiency or advanced are, earned a level one for that category. But you can also see here, a couple of schools here, um, that forty-six percent of students or forty-five percent of students passed the test or proficient or advanced, but those schools still earned a level one for achievement. And that is because of the combined rate. Because it's not only the students who passed, it is also students who make growth. And our L students who make growth. And when the state looks at this, they also look at a three-year average and they take the best score. So they look at three years, and if this most recent year was not the most advantageous, they take the highest three-year average. Um, so for us, it's helpful to know, okay, but at the end of the day, last year, how many students were proficiency or advanced so that we know just are our students progressing towards readiness or say an elementary school readiness for middle and so on?
Dr. L, so the three-year average, how far does that go back?
Um, just over the past three years.
Okay, so that's it.
So this is the same for elementary schools. Again, you can see examples here. How some that earned level red had higher raw score than those who earned green, any kind of class to do with growth. Our middle schools, this graphic looks a little different, um, just so we could put it all here. But this is English and math, so English is the darker blue and math is the lighter blue. Again, the raw percentage of students who passed or were proficient or advanced on the assessment itself. And the colors around the edge indicate the level that it was given. So for a school like, um, Lucille Brown, sixty percent of students were proficient or advanced, but they are a level red because that wasn't sufficient growth. And then hi, this is our high school data, same thing, English and math. And the one thing I just want to call your attention to with high school is the English data actually both reflects, at high school, you can take the assessment multiple times. So this reflects both the reading and the ELA, which are typically given in, I'm sorry, ELA, reading and writing. These are typically given in the junior year, although some schools out for some students to take the writing in tenth grade. So the state gives us that choice. We typically give the writing in eleventh grade. And then students in the fall of their senior year who did not pass those exams get another chance to take those exams as these are required for high school graduation. But the thing I want to point out for, um, the ELA rates in particular is some of the, these numbers also include what we call a substitute test. So the state does allow school districts from an approved list to use a substitute test in certain cases. And, um, uh, we, there's a test that we have been using probably more liberally than we should have been. And so we have, we have pulled that back. It's the work keys assessment, which some of our schools were using, proactively thinking students wouldn't be able to do as well on these. So, um, again, it's totally allowable by the state, uh, but we don't feel that we want to continue that practice at the same rate that it's been done and want to use that substitute test for a certain percentage of students that really needed to graduate. So let me pause before I talk about, okay, so what are we doing about everything? Are there questions just to understand what I've presented so far?
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tracy, I was just curious in regards to what you just said. Do you know what percentage of our students were being proffered that substitute exam, a little of that as well that you referred to?
Um, I don't have the exact percentage. I have numbers. And it, it, what I'm told by my team, and I, when I look at the three, I can send the three-year data, it has fluctuated. I mean, frankly, in full candor, there, in times of transition, though, uh, someone in my seat will say, we're not doing that anymore. And then somebody might say, well, we really need to do that. And so then it goes up, and then somebody says, no, we really shouldn't do that, and it goes down. So, um, I don't have a specific percentage, but I can send you the, the raw numbers. I don't think it would dramatically alter it, but I think it will alter these somewhat noticeably in certain schools.
Ma'am, no questions from the audience. I apologize. Will you send us an email or speak to the superintendent? Ms. Burke?
I'm a little speechless. And I'm thinking in terms of the pressure that comes upon all of us to look at this data. Because I know how hard everyone continues to work. And I like this system a little bit better, but in reality, it is what it is. And we've gone to the point of where is, you're looking at growth. However, I have two questions. Have our children been made aware of the difference? First of all, let's start with the teachers. Have they had ample professional development to see the difference in terms of, um, in the end, you still have to make their pass in school, okay? So that's what I'm trying to build up to. So have the teachers had ample professional development to see the difference in how this is being done?
Um, I, at the teacher level, not yet. Principals have. Um, and one of our next steps is to meet with every school to outline a plan to ensure that, A, our principals really do deeply understand this data because, I mean, I've had lots of conversations and I've spent a lot of time on this, and it's still a lot to really wrap your head around. Um, and so we can certainly include a, a plan for how we communicate, engage and communicate with teachers. But to date, teachers have not, principals have.
You've done an awesome job in terms of making it clear. I understand it very now. Not fully, but not, um, some things I'm still seeing as questions about. So as we connect the classroom instruction with this plan of action, where our students have weekly assessments, daily assessments, or nine weeks assessments, how is that connected with this piece? Is it based upon diagnostic purposes? Or who passed and who failed? And how is that? At some point, there needs to be a connection so that children can see where they're wrong and teachers need to see that as well. It's someone earlier mentioned in terms of having a data system in place. So I guess that will be put in place until the teachers have been.
Right. So in terms of how we're tackling this, and I'll answer your question specifically, we do not, well, first, I'll just say that we do not have a common interim assessment system. So there are, we have a, a small number of, between there are state required assessments, and then we have a very small list of, I would say, district required assessments. But those are not sort of interim or formative in nature as like we do a nine weeks assessment. So that's currently not in place. I'm sure that's been done in the past, but that was not something that was underway as, as recently as last year at least. And so that, an assessment strategy is one of the areas of work that our curriculum instruction department and assessment team know is a priority for me this year. Um, so there's, there's no plan to put in place a, do a hurry-up forced set of interims. I think those can be very valuable data sources, but rushed and done poorly, um, I think only hurts teachers' ability to focus on the data because there isn't a lot of trust or investment in those. Um, so that said, um, we are having individual meetings with every school leader to make sure they understand the data and then map out it, do they understand what, how, what their path to accreditation is. And for a subset of schools, we are digging deeper and thinking through what supports can we provide in the interim um, while we're building a stronger curriculum and assessment model. Um, and while we're building, um, you know, professional development that integrates with that. But, and each of those support plans, for example, pilots and things do have data dashboards that go with them. And so our focus is using the data we have, for example, MAP assessment data. So the MAP is a test we give, it's an adaptive assessment that we give beginning, middle, and end of the year. That's meant to show what students need and growth. And so that's our primary common data source right now. And then anything in between is working with schools to develop individualized plans.
So is Pearson still the company that puts together the state assessments?
Yes.
So that means it's going to change soon. Yeah, that's, that's what happens. Once you get to a certain point, and that's something to be addressed later.
Right, and the math assessment will change. This, this will be a new math assessment because those standards have just changed. And then the following year, our ELA assessments will change.
So with the reading piece, if I may, I'm sorry. The reading piece, um, just what baffles me is that I don't, we want to make sure that our teachers have all that they need and then some. However, sometimes you can have so much or not enough. So how do they know in advance how their children are going to fall or gain if there's no assessment in place? But if this school has one assessment, this school, that's what I'm hearing, correct? Another school has another assessment. Well, our teachers can put together on their own pretty much. That's what used to happen at one time. They would put together their own assessments, but, for instance, I don't want to do something at Chimerazo where Fairfield may be doing something totally different, but we are, in the end, all of our children are tested on the same areas. So at some point, there needs to be, not the opportunity to test, 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 test. It can be just three questions, right, Jack there? Just so the teachers will know, and the children need to know, where, where they are in terms of making those gains. So I know that you're starting pretty much from scratch, which is unfortunate because our children need that support. So I'm just, as a teacher, I would be just a little in the air right now.
So with what I have, so, um, A, we, I think common assessments can be very powerful, and I want to be able to do them in partnership with our teachers, um, such that it's not, uh, it really is data that we really can use. Um, and so I, I, it needs to be synced with our scope and sequence. Um, and so I, I, it needs to be synced with our scope and sequence, which means we need to really take a look at that. In the meantime, we do have data from, we have SOL data. So schools and teachers can get a very detailed report by student about around what their, what standards they struggle with. So we do have LASH, and then we also have MAP, um, which is the measure, um, measure of academic progress. And so that is a really valuable tool. And, and our hope is they can, they have data in September, they just wrapped up testing. So they have that data right now. They'll take that again in December, January, they'll have mid-year data to see who's making progress. And that assessment does provide a correlate, and it, a prediction about if a student makes their growth goal, will they meet proficiency on the Virginia assessment? Um, but it's, it's, it's different. It's not meant to be just another practice test or a benchmark just around the test, the SOL. It really is meant to look at what should students, and it's a national assessment. So what should students across the country know and be able to do? And then it gives teachers a projected growth. Um, and so we're working to make sure our schools and teachers know how to use that data.
Ms. Horn, then back to Ms. Burke.
I, I just, I wanted to talk about the achievement gap because that seems to be an area where we have a lot of problems. So these are our subgroups. So help me identify them, special ed, this one, and then English language learners.
It's, it's every student group, so, um, it's black economic, these are state terms. Um, black economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, students with disabilities, and white. Um, those are the buckets that the state uses.
Okay. So do we know or do the principals know which of those buckets in their school is, could be all five or six of them or could be just one or two to go to a level three?
Yes, so schools have all that data and we have a, we do have the same, um, view that looks like this for each of those in both English and math.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep, great question.
If I may add, um, and I think Dr. Apple will speak to this, but part of the response to this data is individual meetings with principals to sit down, go through all the data. Because frankly, it is quite confusing, this new regime, um, and fully understanding the implications for every subgroup. Uh, more than that though, setting goals around those subgroups for this school year. So trying to be very strategic about how we approach the work, um, and so that it's in front of mind for principals as they go about the year, uh, where are the areas that their students are most behind and which students? And how to prioritize their resources, supports, and so on. So, um, I think step one is understanding the data. Step two is being clear about the goal we have in relation to the data. And then there's a whole lot of other support that needs to come behind that for our teachers and our school leaders.
And, and so just to speak to a few other supports we are offering. So headline one is the, the best way to ensure improvement here is to ensure that our teaching and learning is improved. And we want to do that regardless of an assessment or regardless of accreditation. That's just the right thing to do. That's our core business is teaching and learning. And improving teaching and learning in every single classroom and every single school. Um, we know that we have work to do and that's going to take a bit of time to do it right. Um, and to make sure that our response to this doesn't reinforce what we hear from our teachers around a, a focus on a testing culture. And so it feels really important to do this in a teaching and learning culture, um, not a get the test scores up culture. Um, so that's kind of the, the, I think the frame that, um, Harry and I have talked a lot about in terms of this approach. Um, so specifically for short term, what we can do right now is, again, there's no replacement for principals and their school leadership teams and by extension, their teachers, deeply understanding the perform, the achievement levels and the needs of their students. So ensuring they understand this data, not just, not only so they understand their accreditation, but so that they can really think through where do we put, where are our priorities and where are we going to work with students? Um, the second is a goal-setting process for principals that aligns their goals to the accreditation indicators. And we would say that these indicators are worthy of goal-setting. Students who are achieving or making growth is something we probably want to know, right? That's a good goal, something to set a goal around. Student academic, closing gaps among subgroups is important. And students coming to school is important. And students graduating on time is important. So making sure that those, um, principal goals do align to those criteria because they do matter. The third is this, um, we've, we've been doing some deep data analysis to target, um, to develop targeted assistive plans for our highest priority schools, including support from our central office staff in various ways. Again, in partnership with our principals, sitting down and saying, "What do we think is going to be most helpful to you right now?" And working with your staff to improve outcomes for students. So that might, um, be central office team members partnering with school. So not kind of just flooding in and being another thing, but really in partnership with the school, developing a support plan that might take the form of co-teaching, collateral planning sessions, maybe some targeted professional development, um, or aligning, um, around instructional walks to give effective feedback and coaching. La, fourth, I've talked about this in previous, uh, presentations, but we have developed a few intervention pilots. We also, one of the positions that was approved in the reorg was a manager of student support and interventions. And so she's been working to build a real framework for how do we make sure that every student who needs it, we have a clearly defined plan for intervention? Um, and these are a couple, our reading mastery and corrective reading program is going to address some of the foundational reading gaps in some of our schools. And IREDI is an example of an instructional, um, software that we were already using across the division, um, but didn't have a targeted kind of implementation approach. And so it was sort of being used, the teachers wanted more guidance. And so there are a set of schools that are really digging into becoming model sites for that. And we hope, we believe that that would move the needle. Um, in addition, when you all approved last, uh, the last meeting, um, the targeted tutoring and such. So those are all efforts that we're working to improve. And then our principal directors spend, I think, all of their time, um, in schools, four out of five days minimum. Day five is always talking about student achievement and co-planning. And, um, and so when principal directors are at schools, they're focusing on instruction, culture, and attendance with, with principals. And then, I mean, this isn't really, um, exciting or, you know, I, 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 this is my favorite stuff is like laying the groundwork to improve instruction. Uh, but this, this is the work, we have to do that work now to watch things for nineteen twenty. So we think about adapting or building new curricula that teachers really find useful. That's a good purpose. Developing an assessment strategy and some of those other things such that, um, we will allow any change in a fair way in partnership with our teachers and things like this. And so maybe do a lot of that groundwork, align our literacy plan, and the things we see in our, um, strictly Japan.
Ms. Burke, Ms. Burke?
Excellent work. Excellent work is, is evident that student achievement is moving up. And with a plan, you said some key names on this aside, especially with the, um, individual impact. Best, best, best accident. As having instruction and work in this, so much can be seen that other items is yeah, it's less accident. It's a path, path, if the people are seeing the instruction coming in, it's not to evaluate the best way that the partner and to be a part of that process can be in the background. And if the principal directors and the banana telling how to set the instruction, the emphasis is on the, um, instruction piece. If there's any other thing that you're trying to say, find the instruction piece and that's a fact. The plan is going to work and be displayed. So I, I thank you so much, well done. I love the power of the beautiful persons and the living, very sorry. And, uh, maybe should actually receive additional design. My question is, in regards to assessments that we're trying to take, is that on the computer or is it in the computer? The, uh, SRFS?
No, I mean, I guess SRF.
Not that, not that, not that, it's on a doctor test. And that is the math thing, math and the, the, the science is actually there. So do you have enough computers, paths, when you try? No. I would say, uh, no. We, we, we are in the process of doing a technology audit as probably, uh, the first basic needs and putting, understanding some of the procedures around testing, it's probably that work. Um, and so this is a, to be, uh, big place of work ever been that. Um, schools have made it work. And so we are trying in partnership with, uh, Mr. Simmons' team, more working to get away with it and really understand what the issues are around technology there. But I believe that schools were able to initiate the assessment. Um, again, I think that right now, probably some schools have tiresome fancy money to get it done a little bit. Back to the opportunity piece. The driving charge should be positive and have not, because it's not a fact. It's something that we need to spend and we need to have this. The same thing with the training and everything, it's happening, it's the house thing. So the, the state department should even have this back. I mean, this, yes. And that's the time, now that I can have this back at this point, because I know there is not to share that, that, that better work. So I'm glad that we have the right team in place to get this done right now. And because we must, each child should be ready to have it that, that time. That's nothing else, anybody who wants to continue to struggle. We're beginning the planning process of how to do that. There's some, um, state funding potentially available for high school. And so we're beginning the planning process to understand how to do that that way.
Ms. Burke?
My question is really to tend to Ms. Burke's question. Um, I will say, I'm glad to hear that you're doing a technology audit. I have heard some concerns, um, about laptop availability and internet availability. And I think also IREDI have heard concerns about, um, little kids, uh, having trouble using specifically laptops, which IREDI is only available on laptops. So, um, anyways, uh...
Just some other things to look into as you're, um, going down this course. Thanks.
Ms. Ball?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Uh, yeah, I also wanted to mention something about IREDI. I am, I'm curious and on some level concerned about how effective it may be for some of our youngest students. Um, I spoke with a teacher who said that, uh, there are some circumstances where students may skip through some of the problems to get to sort of some of the games that are, uh, involved in IREDI. So I'm really enthusiastic about the fact that the kids are that engaged. Um, but I, I do hope that we take a good look at how useful that data is. Uh, and then I'm also really glad to hear that we're going to be doing this technology audit. I think we hear all the time from, from teachers and administrators about half technological needs in their schools, uh, faulty internet, not enough devices. Um, so I'd love to, uh, to get a better graph of what we need to, to do system-wide to address it. And, uh, yeah, I think Ms. Burke addressed the other points that I wanted to talk about.
Ms. Gibson and Mr. Young?
Yes, my daughter would be very thankful to hear us talking about the technology issues because she was ready to tear it up after taking her, also, one of the tests recently and, um, and just was incredibly frustrated because, you know, she didn't, she's like, "Mom, you don't want to take them." And then when you have technology issues on top of it, it just about made her want to blow her out. Um, uh, I guess the other question that I have as a person who is sensitive to the amount of testing is, um, is just, you know, having, I want to make sure we've measured how much testing we're doing. Because I, I mean, there are benefits to tests, obviously, um, but obviously, that's also time that we're taking away from, from support. And so, um, I think as a, as a starting point, I, I think it would be helpful to have an understanding. And I think for parents too. Um, I think parents really wonder how the classroom is different from when they were in school. And I think one of the big differences has to do with testing. And so, uh, to provide some information so that parents have a clear understanding of what, um, their students, their, their children will be going through over the course of the year and what the testing landscape looks like, um, you know, in elementary, in middle, and in, in high school. Um, and I'd love to look and, you know, also understand how other comparable school systems look from a testing standpoint, um, you know, uh, just in terms of the, the, the testing that they do that's district-wide versus the mandatory testing that, um, that we have to do. Um, I, uh, you know, lean towards preferring diagnostic testing that identifies needs, um, particularly, uh, uh, you know, with, um, you know, students that have a variety of needs that come into our classrooms. Um, and the other, uh, observation or thought that I had too is just wanting to ensure that we really do pull teachers in as much as possible. Um, and, um, I'm, I'm curious to know, um, as you were talking, there was a note about, um, uh, the goals that are given to principals. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what the, what those goals look like, how they're outlined, and how much variance there are from building to building in terms of those goals?
Sure. Um, so I'll take the last question first and then I'll share a few thoughts on the assessment side. Um, and, um, um, Harry's really been driving a lot of this, but we've been doing some partnerships. So, um, he can get us the more precise language. But the goals are, the measures are the achievement indicators, um, based on, the indicators on the accreditation. So achievement rate, achievement gap, et cetera. And every school sets their own target. Um, so based on where they are, what's a reasonable, yet ambitious, but a reasonable target that the principal believes that they can make in the coming year? Um, it would be foolish to say, "We're all going to be level one in every indicator." Um, and so it's, it's really working with principals to set those individual goals. Do you want to speak to that? Anything else that I get it right?
Good evening, board chair. School board, two hundred and cameras. Speaking of goal-setting, so each, this year, each of our principals will set five goals. And the majority of these goals will be connected, directly connected to accreditation. So at the high school, high school principals will set overall, all of these are growth goals. High school principals will set growth in the overall proficiency of English and writing, excuse me, reading and writing, as well as mathematics. Most high schools will also have a goal to reduce the chronic absenteeism rate from last year. And they will also have two school-specific goals. The school-specific goals give principals flexibility to set their own goals, but they should be directly connected to accreditation. At our middle schools, in our elementary schools, it's a little bit different goal-setting. So again, our middle and elementary schools will set growth goals connected to overall English and writing proficiency as well as mathematics proficiency. But what's different about elementary and middle school is there is a goal that is attached to subgroups based on average growth over the course of the school year. So when you look at the achievement, or if you think about the achievement gap goal, elementary and middle schools will have an achievement gap goal based on how many subgroups are not performing at level two, uh, excuse me, not performing at level one. This is where it gets a little complicated. Yes, this actually does become a little complicated because the achievement gap is defined as the number of subgroups that are not performing at level one. So depending on where you're level one, level two, and level three, your goals may look a little bit different. The subgroups that you target may look different. And then our middle schools, besides the sub-goal, the achievement gap goals and the overall proficiency goals in English and mathematics, our middle schools will also have the choice to either select a growth goal connected to science achievement or to select a goal of reducing chronic absenteeism.
And just to speak on, I just wanted to quickly, uh, sorry, that on the assessment, um, point, there is a process that I've asked my team to, uh, basically start, which is, it's an assessment inventory. And, and that inventory looks at not only the ones that we require as division, which we know because we require them, but those things tend to, uh, assessments can proliferate and there might be assessments that are required or that have just sort of legacy that we might not know about or that teachers might find more or less useful. And so as part of the assessment task force, that's, that'll be launching in November, the, the teachers that are on that task force will be looking at, doing what we call an assessment inventory to really make sure we know all of those assessments and then look at them to make sure we don't have duplication of purpose because there are different purposes in terms of diagnostic, formative, and summative. And what is, um, and how, and are they being used? And is that data being used well? And where are we having, um, data that's not being used, et cetera? So we will, I'm really passionate about that topic and we'll do more digging there.
I would also... Ms. Gibson, Mr. Young, Ms. Burke, and to connect to you.
I would also love to see costs for those tests too. Um, I know that we, you know, are mandated, but again, as an advocate, I would love to see those numbers.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, thanks. My, my question regards... My question regards something that Harry just spoke to and specifically the chronic absenteeism. Are you all prepared to present that data? I really want to commend Harry and our entire team on, in beginning with the principals and increasing awareness about the new policy that this board adopted. Are you prepared to present the new, I recognize we're only a month and a half in, but the new data vis a vis last year and if, because of that increased awareness, students are in class more frequently?
Great question. We'll be able to present our data at the next school board meeting on where we are currently versus where we are at this time last year.
Ms. Burke? Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is in regards to the subgroups. How many, I recall, I'm trying to recall the number of students that, was it forty-nine? What's the number?
Thirty.
Thirty.
To be too small?
Right.
To not, to not have a data point?
What is, right. What exactly is the subgroup? I know what they are, but what's the number expected to create a subgroup? You have.
Oh, well, there's the five demographics. And if you have a, less than thirty in that student group, it's, they put TS for too small. So they do not get a level assigned. It doesn't count against them.
If it's less than thirty, it doesn't count as a subgroup. So it's thirty-one and above that counts.
It's size, you mean quant, like numbers, student number, student numbers. Yes.
Okay.
I will, I will double check that to make sure that it doesn't weigh against you, but I'm going to double check that.
So if you have thirty exceptional education, special ed students, that would count as a.
Right, so below thirty, I believe, is the cutoff, but I want to confirm that.
So if you have less than thirty.
You get no, you don't, you do not receive a level indicator. You just receive a TS.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So Dr. Epp.
Yes.
So your question regarding your subgroups again, so is it possible that a certain demographic or a certain race can be graded twice in that subgroup, like economic disadvantage?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So that hasn't changed?
Correct. So if a student is economically disadvantaged and white, they would count in both subgroups.
The reason why I'm shaking my head, because the state potentially is supposed to be making improvements, but we still have ethnic group, what have you, that can be rated.
A double, right. That is correct. The, I think the way that they've addressed this is through the level indicators. And so out of five groups, you, you, it's, it's how many, you have two or more that are in level three, that have a red, two or more, you can be in yellow, two more at level two. And so they, I think they try to address that with some of these, but it is still, it is still built into that, into the system.
Madam Chair, I think that's also why it's so important that principals will set at least two goals around the achievement gap in the subgroups. Now, without being very strategic, focusing on one particular subgroup, it's more than likely that if you see improvement in that subgroup, such as African Americans, that you will also see improvement across other subgroups.
I don't want to belabor. I guess the bright side, the technology audit, because we know we are likely in that area.
Ms. Owen?
Well, just in closing, I want to say that I think data can be very powerful and information can be powerful. And I know that working with our teachers and principals, that we can help improve teaching and learning for our students. And that's what, to get to where we ultimately need to be in terms of what's great for all of our kids, that's going to take a while. But I, I am, while this can be sobering at times, when you really look at it and you really see, you know, the impact of not being prepared has on a student's education and their future, at the same time, we know that this can change because if we, if we have the right supports and plans and really help our teachers and schools and division keep the main thing, the main thing, which is, we need to focus on teaching and learning and all the things that help make that happen and continue to take away those distractions. So I'm optimistic despite the sort of sobering reality of where we are right now.
Mr. Young and Ms. Owen?
Just real briefly, I'd introduced a concern that was, that was shared with me by folks in the building, specifically relevant to Aspen. And you may recall, discussed how, if what was conveyed to me was correct, if the default, the default in Aspen pertinent to attendance is that they were there, that they attended. Do we know, first, if that's correct, and I have to believe that it is, but if that's correct, then second, if that is correct, if that has been, if that has been, if you would concur that that's a problem and if it, so if it's been addressed specifically, just so everybody can appreciate what I'm saying. I've heard that sometimes, particularly in our secondary schools, that our administrators will be meeting with students and the administrators know darn well that the student hasn't been in the building for maybe, I'm just going to use an arbitrary number, forty days, but Aspen will say, oh, they were only absent for twenty days. And we think we perhaps can attribute that partly, if not fully, to folks just weren't going in there and clicking, hoping that Jonathan wasn't there.
Well, what I'll say to that is the attendance data we will present at the next board meeting will be quite sobering. I track attendance almost daily throughout all of our comprehensive high schools, some of our high needs, middle and elementary schools. We have not addressed the Aspen situation about the automatic default being present. But if that is counting students present who actually aren't, then that is even more worrisome because our attendance right now is, it's gut-wrenching right now. So I don't believe that people are being, I don't believe that teachers or administrators are using the Aspen default to their advantage. I believe that we are taking accurate attendance across our middle and high schools and elementary schools. And when I share the numbers with you all in two weeks, you will see that we have a lot of work to do around chronic absenteeism, which is why it is very important for us to make sure that most of our schools set a goal around the reduction of chronic absenteeism.
And I would just add, it's very common in many school systems for the default to be present because it keeps, you assume most kids are there most of the time, and it keeps teachers from having to do every single day, click, 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 twenty, twenty-some times. So I think the question is how do we validate and test that those, that that's happening, that attendance is happening at every period? But it's pretty common for that to be the default. We just need to make sure it's being used.
We may, we may need a different assumption.
I just want to say thank you to both of you. I mean, this is very confusing and hard to understand a bit, but you're really helping us to understand it. And I know you've spent hours and hours working on this. And I appreciate all the goals you're working on with our principals. And I know this is going to have really good impact for our students. Thank you. Thank you.
Two hundred and thirty cameras.
I just wanted to connect an earlier discussion we had with this discussion, speaking about teacher voice. And so my teacher advisory council is meeting on Wednesday, and Dr. Epp will be leading them through a discussion of what professional development should look like going forward to help us make these changes that we want to see. So this is something that I committed to doing earlier in the year, and this will be the kickoff of that conversation. Likewise, the discussion around principal goal setting started at my principal task force with a group of principals to help us inform what that process looks like. So I do want the board to know, we take very seriously this notion of working with our teachers, with our school leaders. And frankly, last week I had my parent task force where we talked about ways we could mobilize more parents of all backgrounds to support our funding efforts, which was the other resolution we had earlier this evening. And then shortly, my student task force will be kicking off as well. So this notion of doing the work with our community is incredibly important to me. And so I thought it was important to connect the earlier conversation that we had with the discussion we're having now. I firmly believe we are smarter when we do this work in collaboration with our staff, with our families, and with our kids. And so that's how we are approaching it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to share that sentiment, to echo another conversation we had earlier with the understanding that Dr. Lay is very open to having another presentation about the new changes with the standards of learning, just to reinforce all of the great work that your team has done. And we will appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because this is.
We're happy to talk more at any point. Thank you.
Next item.
The next item is file point zero three, receiving update on the GRTC partnership.
Can I bring the presentation up? All right. I'd like to give a quick overview of where we currently stand with the GRTC RPS partnership. Just to dig back a few weeks when we had our initial discussion about this, this partnership provides a lot of benefits to our students. First and foremost, it gives kids greater opportunity to catch the bus and to explore our freight city. I'm really excited because a student does an RPS bus, provided there's a GRTC bus nearby, they're going to hop on and get to school. They can also catch the bus because the card is active twenty-four seven to museums, to libraries, to their part-time jobs, after-school activities. It's really giving them out there to explore the city, which we're all really excited about. And finally, operationally, the card also serves as an RPS ID card for the student. Here is a high-level timeline of key activities that have occurred to get us to where we are today. As you can see, August and September were fairly busy, and October's shaping up to be much of this, much, much more of that. It's important to note here that families must, must opt-in to this program. They have to sign a parent consent form in order to have their child enroll in a program. And we started reaching out to schools to get that parent consent back in August. In terms of our marketing, we've done a lot at the division-wide level. You can find an RPS GRTC partnership banner on our webpage. We've also featured very heavily in our RPS social media. The schools have also gotten involved. There are parent links also featuring the banner on their website and advertising on their own school-based media. And finally, the city is also promoted. There's a dedicated page on the GRTC website which promotes this partnership, and the mayor has also sent out a few tweets about this, which we're excited about. So this is where we are as of last week. As you can see, we have some high flyers, and we have a few schools that are going to need some, some more work, particularly at Huguenot Ambushman Alternative. I will note that RAS got a late start. They opened their program October second, and the principal there fully believes they'll have a lot more people enrolled by the end of this week. Any questions here? And across the division, we're at about twenty-eight percent enrolled for all students.
Ms. Owen? Ms. Burke?
I would just tell Mr. Simmons that I went on the GRTC website and tried to figure out how I could get from my house to Huguenot. And the best I could come up with was two hours. And I'm not sure I could even do it because at one point it looked like I would get to the transfer and then have to wait like another forty-five minutes. And so I'm not sure I could get there in two hours. So I think part of the problem there is not that the children aren't, or, excuse me, students are not interested or their parents are not supportive, but the buses from parts of the ninth district really don't run in a good way to get to those high schools. And I'm not sure that they would run in a good way to get those students to their after-school jobs and even to get to a museum. So hopefully, GRTC is seeing this too. And maybe we can share with them that maybe that's part of the problem. If you look at those, I mean, if you look at, and it's really hard to find it on the map because you have to get, you know, there's one map for one bus and one map for another bus. So I, I just would like to see us encourage GRTC to do a little better with making it work on the south side of the region. Thanks.
Thank you. With Open High, I'm not surprised. I'm surprised it's not one hundred percent because that is a part of their curriculum to go all about the city. So I'm glad they are taking full advantage of that and now they don't have to pay for that. The IDs look great. And speaking with a couple of students this past weekend, I think most of the schools have had their makeup days, but will there be another makeup day for those who didn't follow through?
Yes, there will be.
All right. Because one lady was telling me this weekend that she was, she was supposed to have it done on Friday, but we didn't have school Friday. But Lily was scheduled for Thursday, so she just lost track. But if we, we're going to get those numbers up, especially as the season changes as well, the children have part-time, students have part-time jobs. But I'm very pleased that this program is in place, many thanks to our city, to the mayor and city council for getting a start. And there are routes that do need to be addressed, but I know that's part of our part, that's all their part. So as our spokesperson, I'm sure you'll take that part back. But I'm glad there will be more makeup days because some young people have forgotten. But turning their permission forms were just forgotten. So.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah. You know I like to brag on Huguenot every time that I get, but I'm really displeased with this, really displeased. And I, I think perhaps Linda is partly correct, but irrespective of if there's a route to the school or not, for example, this weekend, the food festival, that's a perfect kind of event that I think we all first saw, students being able to leverage public transportation to get to. So sure that to say, you can convey my sentiment to my friend over there, or I'm sure I'll do it tomorrow too.
I hear you. Thank you. Just in terms of next steps, we want to keep on with our promotional campaigns and increase participation. We want to develop targeted outreach to support some of our low flyers like Huguenot to try to get their, their numbers up. We get a lot of data through this, which is really great. So each month we get a report about ridership, who's riding, where are they going? And we plan to use that to help us define some implementation going forward. And then finally, we want to explore the possibility of a media feature for some of our students who are using this as partnership, just to get the word out a little bit more. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Dr. Speedy. When you say data about who's riding, that's just in a broad sense, right? We wouldn't be tracking individual standards.
Yes. That's what I like to hear. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is item six, vegetarian items, six point zero one, receiving combined first quarter financial report for July, August, and September two thousand eighteen. for July, August, and September two thousand eighteen.
Like I was just here. All right, so good evening. Um, you have the general line revenues and expenditure report. Just wanna draw your attention to a few, a few high notes. The big takeaway here is that we're still very early in the year. About eighty percent of our budget is salaries and our biggest employee group, teachers, just came back at the end of August. So we haven't seen a lot of movements in very key areas to this point. Um, we'll continue to track the key areas listed here for non-contract instructional admin, other professionals and clerical, um, and just at a high level, these buckets are primarily used for leave payouts, uh, for substitutes, uh, things of that nature. Um, I am excited about my team's work to dig into the part-time situation. I find a lot of our part-time positions are not coded in, uh, our AS four hundred to allow us to track and monitor them very well. So we're gonna tackle that problem this year. So we'll get some much cleaner data, uh, with this as we go forward. Um, and in terms of revenue received, on page two, we're in good shape here. Uh, we submitted our quarterly transfer request to the city just last week. So we are, we are on pace.
Well, thank you, Dr. Spini. So, uh, you mentioned the AS four hundred. Is that, uh, a fairly old platform?
Nineteen ninety-two, yes.
Okay. Because I see, uh, over ten years ago it was phased out or at least replaced by IBM. Um, is that something that's a priority for us to?
It absolutely is. We need a better system.
If I may, um, um, uh, upgrading those systems and better integrating them is in our strategic plan. And, uh, though we can't speak about specific vendors, we'll say that we have begun to look at possibilities of platforms, uh, and Mr. Simmons knows far more about this than I do, but that would integrate HR, budget, um, application process in many other systems so that we have a, um, better level, that we can provide a better level of customer service, not just to our employees, but our applicants and to the public, of course.
And additionally, the benefit of bringing these different systems together is that we could realize some real savings there, which we're excited about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons.
Next item?
The next item is item seven, your board actions, seven point zero one, receive for actions, human resources actions.
Good evening, board. Um, the recommended HR department actions, uh, for tonight include the nomination of nine employees, the change of contract of fifteen employees, the resignation of eleven employees, the return from leave of three employees, the furlough of one employee, the name change of two employees, and the retirement of three employees.
Do you motion? Ms. Burke?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the HR actions as reported.
Been moved by Ms. Burke and taken by Ms. Owen?
Point of clarification, uh, and would that be in the addendum? Just wanted to make sure we get it all.
Shall I be stated? I move that we accept the Human Resources Department actions reports inclusive of the addendum.
Removed by Ms. Burke and probably taken by Ms. Owen? Any discussion? I did not.
Motion is made by Ms. Burke and taken by Ms. Owen. Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Spini?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. The next item is item nine, other informational items, nine point zero one is to receive for information, the solar update that document is posted to board, or that's for your review. Item ten is new business.
Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Dr. Spini. I wanted to, um, follow up on an email I sent to the board about the Merck conference this Friday. I, uh, all the details are listed there, but it's, uh, for the Metropolitan Education Research Consortium out of BCU. I found, uh, that it was a great, uh, conference to attend last year. A lot of learning from educators in the region as well as, uh, from, uh, other professionals who spend a lot of time researching education issues. Uh, so I'd encourage you, if you can, uh, get some time off work or during the day that Friday, to, uh, to go check it out. It was awesome last year.
Is it time, Fred? Mr. Ball?
It's an all-day conference, but I can forward it to you so you can see the, the details.
Mr. Chair, if no other new business, I would move that pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, subsection A and two of Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended. I move the school board of the city, which we convene in closed session to discuss the admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning words from a public school student. A second?
The move by Ms. Young, probably taken by, uh, Mr. Ball? Ms. Burke?
I'm in favor.
Uh, I.
You opposed? You are now in closed. And closed session will be in the small, sad one over there.